Are you all what Houghton found for the borough's 2017 books? Do we have a motion on this resolution number 2018-161? Second. Thank you, Mr. Bolton. And any discussion?
Yeah. Real quick. I mean, is it feasible to have a fixed asset inventory?
It was on the report last year in fairness. The problem is we have to hire a firm to do it. We have to go through and anything over a certain dollar amount has to have a sticker on it and has to be inventory. We kept that up to date for a lot of years, but it's gotten to the point where it's so far out of date that it's not.
But then, Kevin, the question I'm asking, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to tell somebody if they get rid of a piece of equipment? Or, I mean, fixed assets means every pump, every supply you have, so...
It's an onerous job and we, when we get rid of things, we take it off the inventory list. The problem is some of the purchase orders, as they change the rules and regulations for government and what the dollar amounts are, the rules change as to what dollar amount you have to put an inventory sticker on it. So going forward, we're going to have to change some of our financial procedures to assign a number to each one of these items as they go forward. So if they please buy a radar unit, we have to physically, it has to come through our office now and get an inventory number. So it's just going to be a little bit more work on our part, but we will, we'll have a company come in and get us up to date. We didn't have the funding for it this year, so that's why we haven't done it. I'll have to make sure it's in motion.
Did you hear that, Finance Committee?
I have fun. Is that something that other towns may have to do as well and maybe get a better price if they're coming in and doing like inventory update for ourselves and Monique or ourselves and the Smolberg?
It's really, there's not, there's not somebody, I don't think, on state contract, but it, but it's really something that's kind of unique to each town. Each town has to do it, like we have so many different buildings. I'll look around for some pricing. I know Debbie was looking into it because we knew this was going to be on the report, so she's been looking into some options there. When she gets back from vacation, I'll, I'll check with her and see what she's come up with.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Resolution number 2018-161, governing body certification of the annual audit. Whereas NJSA 48:5-4, are you suggesting I abbreviate this in some fashion?
You don't need to read the whole thing. It's just the governing body certification of the annual audit, the annual audit to write.
Yes.
Probably read the resolutions that we have at that stage.
So this requires, just for, just for purposes of explanation, the governing bodies required to certify the audit. What the certification says is, one, we are duly elected members of the governing body of the Borough of Ringwood and the County of Passaic. Two, in the performance of our duties pursuant to NJAC 5:30-6.5, we have familiarized ourselves with the contents of the annual municipal audit filed with the clerk pursuant to NJSA 48:5-6 for the year 2017. And point three, and final, we certify that we have personally reviewed and familiar with, at a minimum, the sections of the annual report of audit titled comments and recommendations. That is, that's our certification. Do we have a motion for resolution 2018-161?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? With that, I will take a roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Resolution 2018-162, be resolved that the municipal council of the Borough of Ringwood hereby authorizes the filing and signature by the mayor of the 2018-2019 Governors Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Aware ASAP Grant Contract in the Amount of $44,880 as administered by the County of Passaic. And this is the grant that goes to the Ringwood-Wanneque Municipal Alliance for the Drug Prevention of People, Dr. Day. It alternates between the Borough of Ringwood administering it one year and the Borough of Wanneque administering it the next year. And the funds always come from the state, through the county, and one of the other towns and we take turns. This is pretty much standard operating procedure. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Mr. Martucci. Any discussion? Roll, roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Resolution 2018-163, whereas the borough requested a proposal for professional services recommendation, Ershkin Road, Lakeview Avenue Improvement Project, contract number 2018-101. And whereas, Schwanahweed Hall's Engineering submitted a proposal dated March 8, 2018, which itemizes three phases required for the project as follows. Right-of-way and topographic survey, $15,000. Design and contract documents, $15,000. Drilling and supervision, $2,000. Whereas, the chief financial officer is certified as to the availability of funds in total amount of $32,000 from budget line item 7-01-40-305-201 for contract number 2018-101. And whereas, the borough engineer recommends awarding this contract to Schwanahweed Hall's Engineering in the amount of $32,000 for the right-of-way and topographic survey, design and contract documents, and drilling and supervision. The Borough of Ringwood has received the New Jersey State Pay-to-Play and Ringwood Pay-to-Play documentation. Now therefore be resolved that the municipal council of the Borough of Ringwood hereby awards professional services contract for the survey, design, and supervision of the Ershkin Road, Lakeview Avenue Improvement Project in the total amount of $32,000 to Schwanahweed Hall's Engineering, Nine Post Road, Suite M11, Oakland, New Jersey.
And this is all coming from the $325,000, right?
Ultimately, yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. Mr. Noonan. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who moved it?
Mr. Martucci moved it.
Noonan seconded it?
Yes.
Sorry, I wasn't paying, I forgot I was the clerk.
We're going to take, any discussion?
Just very briefly, I can, I know it's a tough road for construction, so I'm just going to assume that there's going to be a lot of communication and planning because a lot of people have to park on that road. It's an hour to begin with.
This is just for the design.
They're not starting anything yet.
No, this is just designing the project so we can submit it to the DOD.
Okay, got you.
And they don't have a volatility?
No, they don't. You're going to get in the way of for six years or something. No, we're not, this thing is not going to start building until 2019.
Okay.
Probably the second half of 2019. Because you're going to go through another grant cycle, try to put two grant cycles for paving together, and then it's one disturbance. Design two phases, you know, get grant cycles, two phases, build one phase.
Got you.
That's how, that's how we did, that's how we did Cub Saw, and it just turned out that Cub Saw would need like nine phases and it really got tiring at the end, so we had, we had to push the home, push that home run into, back into Calhoun. So I have a motion and a second on this. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember, Councilmember Spear?
Sure.
Martucci?
Yes.
Bolton?
Where the hell not.
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe? I'm not sure why.
That's adorable.
I'm not sure.
Got to see what, what old resolution that was taken from.
Oh, wow.
All the names were there, so I'm not...
Rolling, rolling right along. Resolution 2018-164, be resolved that Michaela Schwab is appointed to the Sustainable Jersey Green Team Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Is, um...
Uh-oh, can't do that. She can do it.
Okay.
What's the, what's the second?
That's Mr. Ferretti.
Could she be a minor on the Green Team, there's no problems or anything?
Not, this is a purely, it's a volunteer position.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Very good. Okay, and with that, let's have a roll call, please. Okay, Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
You can make the motion.
You can't miss it.
Yes. I thought it was like a conflict on a non...
Rewind, folks.
Player.
Rewind.
Rewind.
Rewind the motion.
It's a, it's a...
I didn't want to break, did I take a minute?
It's, it's a, it's a...
Okay.
Who wants to make a...
Overly sensitive.
Just one more, one more, one more time for the record. Can I have a motion on number 2018-164?
I will move it.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Mr. Ferretti, was that the second from you, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. I will, please, have a roll call on 2018-164. Appointment of Michaela Schwab to the Sustainable Jersey Green Team.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
No, you have to abstain.
Wait a minute, I'm running out of boxes here.
Thank you.
Spear?
Yes.
I'm getting a little confused.
It's a volunteer position. I don't know why we had to do that, but, I don't know, I think I'm a member of the same lake association.
Yeah, I was, I was being overly sensitive.
Moving right along, next piece of business is the manager's report. Thank you very much, Mr. Ha, and now...
Motion.
I'll be very, very, very quick tonight. We have, in green at your, at your place, we have two minor adjustments in the salary ordinances due to formula problem. One is the engineer top end was incorrect, and the other is the dispatcher, for two of our dispatchers, the top end was incorrect. So the dispatchers will now be going, 2018 range will be 61,200, about $2,000 difference, and in 2019 will be 62,424, the calculations for the dispatchers. Engineer, oh, yes, the engineer is on page two. The calculation should be 17,148,700, 18,151,674, and 19,154,701.
Got it. Okay. So do we have a motion on resolution number 2018-165, amending ordinances 2018-09 and ordinance number 2018-11 due to clerical error?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Thank you.
Let's see. We have something in attorney's report, Mr. Connect, right? You have, you have a, you're going to go through the tolling agreement or no?
Yes.
I need that, and...
It's not executive session.
I don't think it's executive session.
No, no, we can discuss that. As you know, with the, with the EPA upping Ringwood, EPA has, has been forbearing from filing suit against the borough for what they construe as damages and costs, administrative costs pending this long, long procedure that we've engaged in. And over the years, and just a few months ago, we have entered into tolling agreements, which means that the EPA is under statute of limitations to file, and they will file unless we both agree to a tolling agreement which extends the time for them to file till we can continue our negotiations and discussions with them and see if ultimately the final resolution, amicable resolution can be reached. If it can't be reached, EPA then will reserve, it will, it can then trigger their rights to sue the borough. I think this will be about a third or fourth time we've extended the tolling agreement. Okay? Any questions on that? Again, what it is, is it extends the statute of limitations in the event the EPA wants to sue the borough over the, over any issue referring to the super fund site, the tolling agreement, if we don't agree to the tolling agreement, EPA may institute suit there. Okay? Protect the government's right, the federal government's rights.
Okay.
Okay?
So...
As I say, we've done this on numerous occasions.
So we would want a resolution...
Authorizing the execution of the tolling agreement.
2018-166.
So move.
And that is execution of a tolling agreement with the US EPA.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Mr. Noonan.
Okay, who we have?
We have Mr. Bolton making the motion, Mr. Noonan seconding. And any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Okay, still with the manager's report.
I'm just going to be really brief. I've been working with FEMA. They did declare the March 7th, 8th, and 9th FEMA a federal disaster, so I'm working on trying to get some, however, removal of the snow is not included within the FEMA declaration, so anything ancillary to that, brush damages, that kind of stuff, building damages, our generators are running. So I'm working on all the FEMA sheets to try and, we've been very successful with FEMA in the past, so I'm applying to try and get some of that funding back. So that's FEMA. The only other thing that I have is quite some time ago, the council asked us to look into a piece of property on Greenwood Lake Turnpike, and I guess through the process, Kelly had received market, certified market value from the state of New Jersey for Highlands properties, and they're asking me whether we are going to move forward and try and acquire that property or what the pleasure of the council is. I know this was distributed to you once before, but I didn't have any action taken on it. So my question is, if in fact we could acquire this property on Greenwood Lake Turnpike that is not really local because of the Highlands, do you want me to negotiate with the property owner to the value of the state, the Green Acres program without our, without our own funding?
Right. I think there's a hypothetical value or something like that.
Before you have two different values that are certified, and yes, it is between those two values. Does this want to agree with Lake Turnpike just...
The billboard across from the Autobahn shop.
Correct. Just north of Hidden Valley. So I just need to get back to him as to what we, what your pleasure is, should I negotiate with the property owner or not? Up to the value of, of the funding from the state.
Yes. I think we should just take it the rest of the way and see if that is something that, the property's been up for sale for quite a while, don't know if they're ready to, you know, ready to sell at this price. I think the price they were asking for was a bit higher, but, you know, they, we have this in front of us, we can, if this is from the property owner, have them reconsider.
If you don't use the funds, the Green Acres fund sooner or later, you're going to lose some of that.
So these are, these are coming from Green Acres funds, not our?
Not our funds, not our dollar. That's why I said within the dollar amount, that's before you, in the range.
Specifically, this is a Green Acres planning incentive grant.
Right.
That has about $850,000 for the earmarked to Ringwood that we just cannot find the property block at this price.
And is that the same grant that could go towards a turf field?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's a separate?
Yes.
Yeah, we...
It'd really be a turf field.
Well, it was because I was worried if this was coming from that town.
No, this is, this is Green Acres.
Yes.
The reason I'm trying to talk about this in open session is we're on to an executive session because the, the $2 amounts are highlighted on the sheet in front of you.
Right.
And we shouldn't say that.
I wouldn't.
My question is, this land isn't built, built, all you said, right?
You might be able to get one smaller, but it's, it's not likely to be built.
And as far as the $185,000 that we have to spend, is that something we could utilize that money to buy property that has been foreclosed on, that has come in?
$185,000?
Yeah, that, I think that's what...
Oh, no, the Green Acres, this...
Is it the Green Acres fund? Is that what she's just said? Did I get that number wrong?
The Green Acres fund is for acquisition of vacant properties for preservation.
Oh, it's, we're acquiring them, so we couldn't get reverse for properties that we foreclosed on?
No.
Okay.
Well, that would create a risk for us.
Okay.
If we, if we acquire the property, then that, through Green Acres, then it becomes borough property or we turn it over to the state? It's...
It's borough property.
But it'll be deed restriction.
It's encumbered by Green Acres restrictions.
And is a billboard currently on this property? Is that correct?
I think it probably is, and probably Green Acres would make that, take that down, I would guess.
You know, you can't have a commercial boost on a Green Acres site.
So can anyone approach the person who owns the billboard to see if they were interested in purchasing this property?
No, she owns the property.
Oh, she owns, okay.
And correction, if, if we had foreclosed on a piece of property that was vacant, that didn't have any structures on it, that was, that was, you know, the Green Acres would be interested, you could use it for that type of thing.
You could use it.
If we acquired something that didn't have structures, didn't have a herbic area or not.
Has to be fair land.
Yeah.
And are there any properties that are in the threat of foreclosure right now that would qualify for that, maybe industrial area or underground?
I don't, yes.
Well, when you say, if we acquire it by foreclosure, we don't pay for it.
No, I know that, but we sell it.
Except indirectly, we lost the taxes. I mean, we lost it.
Right.
But then we can turn around and sell it to, to the Green Acres program, but we don't have any currently that would fit that.
Okay, so that we had foreclosed recently on a property over Peter Cooper and also the investment.
Last year, we foreclosed on a few that they paid, we got a couple hundred thousand dollars.
They gave me, they reclaimed it.
Oh, they did.
That's right. We have, we have one foreclosure pending right now on vacant property, and I'll be talking to Debbie, and Scott advised me to talk to Debbie about some other propozers in the future.
Right.
All right?
Because, yeah...
What I, what I do is I look at them because we don't want to foreclose something that has some maybe environmental issues on it.
Liabilities.
There are liabilities, we don't, we're careful what we foreclose on.
Right, no, we don't want liabilities, that's why we're on the billboard.
Even, yeah, even, even this...
Is that something we're going to have to take, take down if we purchase it?
Well, that'll be part of negotiation, how that comes down.
Often what happens with these properties, like the Peter Cooper school, when they had to remove the gravel from the gravel drive, the state will inspect it and they'll tell them again.
Is there any opportunity to negotiate to grandfather and the sign so that it wouldn't be for, like, the borough would take possession of it and then the borough would have the sign for all use?
Well, that, that's, that would be, that would be a negotiation with Green Acres.
Yeah. Green Acres won't let you do that.
And that's rough. You've got to go through the State House Committee down to Trenton.
Yeah.
It's, that's a, that's a haul.
Even if we just made it a really big, nice welcome to Ringwood sign?
You what?
Even if we just made it a really nice, big welcome to Ringwood.
We had to move gravel, these properties probably going to acquire.
You know, the bedrock is two feet below.
So what I'm looking for is some direction on what I should do with this because I...
I would make a motion that you approach the property owner with the values as stated in that, in that certification of market value and gauge interest. Also request that you give a call to Trenton, to the, to the letter writer, and just let them know that we did have a change of personnel, that this, you know, this, this has fallen through the cracks and we're trying to catch up.
Okay, because you take...
Mayor, Mayor Ray spoke to you on the line. Very good.
Okay, and for the record, you auto-operated a block block.
Okay.
Subject to this block 736.
Block 3, block 736.
Okay. All right, so that would be resolution 2018-167.
Correct.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ferretti? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Spear? Yes.
Keep waiting for the clerk to call a roll.
I, I almost said yes before anybody said I can't.
Just start reading your roll, Mr. Ha. How about everybody, everybody call out your name.
Just to go around the table, just...
I have, I have nothing else, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ha. Next on our agenda is our attorney's report.
Do you want me to go to executive session?
I know you better, I know you better, Counsel.
Okay, I just want, the one resolution then, on the special meeting, okay? All recited?
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, are we, are we ready to pull the trigger on that?
Yeah, can we do, can we do that through a mayor's letter, which makes you confirm there's nothing going on in the building, and if we do it tonight, we might not...
We, we want to step on ourselves.
I want to make sure it's the board of justice and the planning board, no, so I'd rather do that through a 48-hour notice.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. General public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the mayor and council, may come to the microphone at this time, state your name and address, support the record.
Seeing...
That was great, made it harmony.
Seeing no one, I move to close. Pablo Porch.
Second.
Ferretti, Bolton. Roll call on closing public. Roll call on closing public.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes. Next on the agenda, mayor and members of the council. What's around the table? Mr. Davison?
No reports, sir.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yeah, I want to say thank you because I know the last meeting was in televised, but I did want to reach out to the chamber and thank them for meeting with Josh and trying to move forward the rail to trail project. I think that's an important thing for our community. And I thank them for also seeking funds for parks which are treasure up here in Ringwood. Also, I want to thank Mayor Spear and Councilman Bolton for recently meeting with a bipartisan group of volunteers who are interested in getting the Economic Development Committee back up and revitalized here in town. We'll be meeting again in September, and we have met with Deborah Hoffman. The good news, Deborah Hoffman has an associate, Kristin, who lives right here in Ringwood, so we have somebody down in the county who has our best interest at heart, and she's actually considering joining the EBC when and if we get it back up and revitalized, so that's good news, and I thank everybody who stepped up to assist us in moving this forward, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Bolton?
Super briefly, I was lucky enough to be home last week and able to attend the Police Academy graduation. It was really way more than I expected, very impressive group of young men and young women, and a great joint effort between Ringwood and Monique, so congratulations to all the kids and the parents. And one last official club for Ringwood Community Day coming up on September 8th. Fireworks, games, beer garden, it's going to be a great, great time, and if it rains, it'll be a great time on the 9th. 4:00 PM Shepard Lake.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Councilman Ferretti?
I just wish everybody a happy last two weeks of summer and back to school. How much tonight?
Back to school is sad.
Thank you. Councilman Noonan?
Not when you have four, right?
Very, very happy Christmas, Fred.
Hopefully this rain stops for a while. That's all.
Simple request. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Everybody's a volunteer. You belong to a church, you belong to the lake association, you belong to a club, you belong to a political club. You see the same people doing a lot of the work. And I would just encourage everybody to take a minute and see if you can help in any way. Something small, but communities built on volunteers, and for some reason, this day and age, we get fewer and fewer. On a second note, I've gotten complaints tractor trailers going around Skyline Lakes, really the Dollar Store.
Going to where?
The Dollar Store tractor trailers are cut to the Skyline Lakes to, I guess, get the Skyline Drive. But I've had three people complaining that they should be cut to the Skyline Lakes.
Yeah, I have a feeling what they're doing is when they get to the Skyline Lakes Drive, they think it's Skyline Drive, and they make a right, and then they can't get out, and then, so maybe we should make that clearer, that that is, maybe we should put a bigger street sign there instead. It's demarcated as the Skyline Lakes Drive instead of Skyline Drive.
So, just want to make your order.
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Thank you, Mr. Martucci. There being no executive session business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Thank you. Councilwoman O'Keefe? Roll call on adjournment.
Councilman Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Martucci?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.